Here. Vice Chair Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Berman is absent. Commissioner Devine? Commissioner Devine is absent. Commissioner Godwin?
Here.
Commissioner Redfield?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Godwin, can you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin.
Anytime.
So before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on any item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to speak, or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom or by the dial-in option, which I would love to show on the screen if we may. Can you show the dial-in information? Okay. Phone number 669-900-6833. Once dialed in, enter the conference number and press the pound key. Once I announce the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone, or the raised hand function in Zoom if dialing in once identified for your turn to speak. Press star six to unmute yourself, wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. I will call each speaker, whether in person or by dial-in, for their public comment opportunity. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. All right. And I believe Commissioner Berman has arrived, so if we can note her presence.
Yes, thank you. Apologies for being a few minutes late.
All right. So just toggling back to our agenda, please give me a moment. Okay. So for administrative business, I do not have speaker cards, so I'm going to open the public comment period on administrative business, but if we don't have anyone on the phone or Zoom, I'm going to close it.
There are no raised hands.
Fabulous, okay. Then I will close public comment on administrative business. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
That motion passes.
Okay. And that will take us to approval of meeting minutes. We had three meetings to approve. We can take them one at a time or all at once. I'm willing to entertain motions. Does anyone have comments? Okay. Commissioner Wright?
I would just like us to consider approving all three at once in the interest of time.
Sure. I don't see anyone with comments on the minutes. I think we do a really good job in Pacifica of our minutes, so... Does anyone have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as noted.
That was a second by Commissioner Redfield. I'm sorry, by Commissioner Redfield. Yes, that's okay. You can still second it. So, okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Redfield. Let's please vote.
The motion passes.
Okay. I see that we do not have any designations to liaison or designations of liaison to City Council. Is that still the case?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I will move on to oral communications. Oral communications is for items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public will have three minutes which to speak, and... I believe all of the speaker cards that I have here are for item one on the agenda, so unless anyone else has oral communication, I'm going to move over to Zoom and the phone.
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Then I will close oral communications. We have no consent items tonight, so then I will move on to new public hearing, CDP-456-23 and TP-111-24, coastal development permit and tree permit. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm James Lynn, Associate Planner with the Planning Division. I'm joined this evening with the city's consultant engineer, Sean Rose, to present the item number one on tonight's agenda. The project is applying for a coastal development permit and tree permit for implementation of improvements related to the city's 2020 bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The project is required to replant six trees due to the proposed removal of three trees. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission add a condition of approval to require the replanting of the six trees as part of the motion. The project includes work with the city's existing public right-of-way on Paloma Avenue, Carmel Avenue, and Santa Maria Avenue between Beach Boulevard and Francisco Boulevard in West Sharp Park. The project's improved includes improvements such as closing of sidewalk gaps, remove and replacement of failed pavement, installation of new ADA-compliant curb ramps, sidewalk driveways, curb and gutter, double slurry seal, and update pedestrian crosswalk and Class 3B bicycle boulevard stripings. I'll go ahead and hand it over to the city consultant engineer, Sean Rose, who will go into more deep details on these improvements.
Mr. Lynn, just, it doesn't appear that the clicker's working. If you can just let me know when to change the slide.
Okay. Great. Thank you, James, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As James said, my name is Sean Rose. I've been retained by the City of Pacifica to manage this project. I will provide a brief presentation, a couple accompanying slides, and then I will conclude and will be available for Q and A. So referring to the first slide, as James alluded to, the project's scope of work will upgrade sidewalks. Hopefully, can you see the... It's clear on... You can see the slide?
Right here.
Great, thank you. It will upgrade sidewalks. Now I can't see it. Okay. Driveway approaches curb and gutter and curb ramps in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. It will repair and resurface streets within the project area, the three streets that James mentioned. It will install bike boulevard stencils on Paloma, which is a Class 3B bike boulevard stencil, and pedestrian crosswalk striping on Paloma and Francisco at those intersections. It will remove, as James said, three protected trees, and that was per the arborist. This project hired an arborist that went out and did a detailed survey, and that was included in your staff report. Recommended three trees for removal based on poor condition, poor health of the tree, but also the perceived hazard, and how those trees would then be able to remain with the improvements going in. And then he proposed a two-to-one replanting ratio, and those trees are 24-inch box trees that would be replanted in their place. The project goals are to improve stormwater management, so I mentioned one of the things we'll be putting in, either replacing or putting in for the first time, will be curb and gutter, so that'll improve stormwater management on these streets. There are no sidewalks in some of these areas at all currently, so this will close sidewalk gaps in the pedestrian and bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the city. Will provide ADA-compliant path of travel, as was mentioned. I already mentioned the crosswalks, where there's also tripping hazards on these streets that this project will address. The next slide is that, just some other project information before I share a couple photographs and conclude my remarks. This project is funded almost entirely by grants, 2.26 million in grants from San Mateo County Measure M, and also one Bay Area grant, which is federal dollars that are being administered through Caltrans. We had a committee meeting on December 12th here in council chambers for the fronting residents. We also are having a site walk that was in our bid, or will be in our bid, that the contractor, town staff, and the arborist will be attending, so there'll be a site walk before construction commences, once we have the contractor onboard. There'll be an arborist on-site throughout. We have that in our bid as well, to monitor construction, root cutting, and also the removal and replanting of the trees that I mentioned. All work will be within the public right-of-way with the exception of conform work. There are some areas where, in order to make grade and put in the concrete improvements, we have to go onto private property, and we have right to enter agreements signed with those owners where that's required. And finally, I have three photos to share. This is just illustrating the work to be done. These are meant to illustrate kind of typically what will be done. They'll be not just these locations, but this particular location is on Paloma. You'll see driveways there to the left of the white truck, and on the right, you can see driveways on both sides. As you're walking along the sidewalk, it's sloped completely across the sidewalk. ADA is 2% maximum cross slope, and this well exceeds that, so everyone's familiar with when you walk down a sidewalk and the cross slope at a driveway is such that you're now canted over and you're not even, unless you have to walk behind out into the driveway itself, so this project will correct that. Next slide. This is on Carmel, and you can see on the left, this is a case where there is, as I mentioned, there's no sidewalk there now, no curb and gutter, and no driveway, at least in terms of concrete. Just gravel and dirt. You can also see pavement deterioration there that this project will be repairing and then resurfacing. So we're going to repair localized failures like this, but we'll also be resurfacing the entire street once those localized failures are repaired. And then finally, this is Santa Maria, and you can see on the right, this is another case where there's no... There actually is old concrete and asphalt in that location, but you can see how deteriorated it is. That all will be coming out, and we'll be putting in brand-new infrastructure, as I mentioned. So that concludes my remarks, and I'll pass it back to James. Thank you.
So as part of the presentation, there are some slides provided for the project proposed plans, and we can go back if the commission has any questions to go back to a specific part of the plan sheet. And per the arborist's report, these are the trees that were surveyed as part of the arborist's report. I'll just briefly go over these also.
It may be helpful to understand which are the three trees for removal and which is the tree that is going to be the four... I believe there's a fourth tree that is going to be preserved and will require a tree protection zone. So if you could associate those with the photographs, that would be really helpful.
Five, 12, and five, 11, and 12. And so the trees that have been marked for removal were trees five, 11, and 12.
So can you float over there? So five is the bottom left, 11 I don't see on this page.
Tree 11 is on the top left.
I think, yeah, I think it's the top two.
And apologies, Chair, the trees for removal are actually trees five, 12, and 26, so I'll go ahead and go back to the first slide for tree number five.
Okay.
And then tree number 12.
Okay.
And then tree number 26, which should be the bottom right corner.
Which tree?
Can you speak into the microphone, Vice Chair?
Which tree?
Tree 26 is on the bottom right.
I think what Vice Chair Ferguson is asking is which of the two trees in the bottom right-hand picture is tree 26? The one with the cursor over on the left?
The one leaning over.
Yeah. It should be the one on the front that's leaning over the public right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. And which tree is the one that will need tree protection fencing?
So if I... Make sure I understand the question. The question, which trees will be protected with tree protection measures?
My understanding from the arborist's report is that there are three Monterey Cypruses, and this was another question. So first, let me ask, is staff done with its presentation, or is it appropriate to be asking questions?
I'll go ahead and conclude the presentation first.
Fabulous, thank you. And then if you wouldn't mind, I think we know most of the people on the dais, but would you mind introducing the person at the end? Hi.
So this is Brian Baltista. He's the Assistant Civil Engineer with Public Works Department.
Fabulous, hi. Thank you for coming. And so I'm going to finish this question, and I'm going to defer to the rest of the commission, then we can come back to my questions. But I believe I read that there is one tree here. Yeah, trees five, 12, and six in the right-of-way are planned for removal due to high risk, per the arborist's report dated 7/8/23. The fourth tree addressed in this report, number 11, is at 174 Carmel and is intended to be preserved during this construction. I took that as, I mean, especially based on the location, that it would need some sort of tree protection zone established and fencing, but I did not see details on the plan.
My understanding from the arborist's report is there's a number of tree protection measures that are called out, enumerated in the report, and that those will be applicable to all the trees being protected, and the numbers of those... 174 is just says is intended to be preserved. I don't know the details tree by tree of which measures will apply, but there are measures that correspond with the Pacifica tree ordinance that will be implemented on this project. They'll apply to any tree that is within the project limits that is potentially impacted by construction, including that one.
Okay, thank you. Do Commissioners have questions before we open public comment? Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah. Some of these trees are... can grow quite tall, like the Mexican palms can grow up to 100 feet, and it seemed like at least the one, like 24, I think it is, is right under a power line. Is there any plan for long-term pruning of these, other than contacting PG&E or any commitment from the owners of those trees to keep them reasonable, healthy, and safe for the community?
We do have a street supervisor... I was just asking Engineer Baltista. We do have a street supervisor that does tree survey work and coordinates with the utility companies, so when we see a conflict with the utility line, that street supervisor coordinates with the utilities on that work. I don't know these specific trees, what the plan is for those. That's not in the report, and I'm not familiar with that. But in general, that's a program that the city has.
Right. But if you look around town, you find that a lot of trees are not pruned very frequently and seem to be... have issues. It would be helpful if we knew how these trees were going to be managed for at least the medium term.
Yeah. Okay, maybe just add one thing to that. When we talked to the arborist and had a call, he was... His recommendations were informed. He mentioned specifically power lines and how trees were being pruned to around, and how they would have to be pruned in accordance with the PG&E clearances, so that went into his conclusions in the report, if that's helpful.
Are there other questions?
I'll hold them. It's more deliberation.
I do have some questions, so... Okay. So I understand that it's three Monterey Cypruses being replaced at a two-to-one ratio. Are they going to be replaced in kind with the 24-inch box tree, so are we proposing six Monterey Cypruses?
It's two-to-one, and I don't... I'm sorry. It's two-to-one is the ratio, as you said. I don't know the species offhand. And the rest of the plans. I see. There's three species you chose in the report. I don't... I'll have to find that section of the report. I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, I would be... That would be helpful to know that. And then how are they going to be irrigated? Or will there be establishment irrigation? How do they survive?
Let me look into that. I don't want to speculate.
Okay.
I want to look at my bid and I'll answer that question.
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to make sure it's... I want to check the bid to answer that question.
And another question in conjunction with that is, this is an area that does have reclaimed water, and I would be curious as to whether or not we were irrigating these with reclaimed water, like the majority of Palmetto. So that's another question. Are there... So the tree protection... Why don't I give you all my questions? We can get back to them after public comment, and that way you have some time to maybe look into them. So I didn't see a detail of what the tree protection fencing looked like, and I would like to understand what all of the tree protection measures are and if they appear in the plans. And then I didn't see a demolition plan or a landscape plan, and those are things that I would expect to see, so I think my question is, how does someone build this without those things? So at this point, I'll stop asking questions, and I think everyone else...
I have one quick question.
Vice Chair Ferguson.
Page 144, Condition of Approval 6C, says that traffic shall be maintained on Olympian Way. I assume that's a copy-and-pace error. Just curious which street that's meant to say. I can reserve my answer for later.
Okay. I'm just taking notes of some of these outstanding questions. Okay. Seeing... Oh, yes.
One quick question. Thank you, Chair. On the new... the two-to-one ratio on the replanting of the new trees, are there any root mitigation measures being done to redirect the roots more downward? It's kind of a standard that gets done, especially with these new sidewalks going, and we want to keep those as long as possible without heaving. Many times, it's a tubular-type sleeve, so I didn't see that in the plan. I'm just curious if that, just as with... Since we're doubling the amount of trees going in, if that's... can be put in the plan.
That was not the root barrier, wasn't called out in his report, but when he does his construction observation, if he sees the need for that, then that could go in during construction via change order. That's the approach we're going to take.
Change order, yes.
Through construction observation out of the construction contingency budget, if we identify the need to do that, as identified by the arborist.
It's almost impossible with established, obviously, but with new plantings, I think, if we can...
With the new plantings, correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I think we will have more questions, obviously, especially as we get answers to some of the current questions, but with this, I'm going to open public comment, so by way of remind... Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry, Chair. Just thought, maybe I can finish out the presentation or...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you concluded your presentation.
Not yet. Apologize.
Please, continue.
So per the information provided before you leave the meeting, staff finds the project is consistent with all zoning standards applicable to local coastal program and general plan policies, and the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan would have no negative effects on coastal resources and would not create any identified negative neighborhood impacts. As designed, the proposed project would improve bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and usage within the coastal zone. For these reasons, staff recommends the Planning Commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approved coastal development permit, CDP-456-23, and tree permit, TP-111-24, by adopting the resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference. And that concludes our presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. All right. So I will now open the public hearing. If we could put call-in information back on the screen. By way of reminder, members of the public will have three minutes with which to make their comments. I will call yellow cards first, and then I will go to Zoom and the phone. If you are dialed in by phone, when I move over to call-ins, press star nine to raise your hand. Okay. I have four speaker cards, and I think I see one more coming. So Bob Haxto will be first, followed by Sharon Ryan and Steve Sutley.
I am Bob Haxto. I live up on San Jose Avenue, across from the Thai Restaurant. So this doesn't directly affect me, but I do think that it's going to be affecting me and my neighbors when the idea of doing the next three streets over... Next three streets, I don't have to move over to say that. The next three streets over, and so I'm concerned about what's being done here. I'm particularly concerned that there was a lack of communication that this meeting today was happening. We didn't... I didn't know about it until I got a mailer in the middle of last week, and I procured from our planning group, or not the planning group, whoever they are, a set of diagrams for this street thing, and they're... You know, I haven't had time enough over that to fully understand what's being done. And then today, I found the agenda, and I found that the discussion of the trees in great detail is in there, which explains why the particular three trees are being whacked. And I'm concerned about the replacement of the trees because, well, I haven't seen any trees replaced since all the trees have been whacked on our streets. And, I mean, I don't see that maintenance is being done well on lots of things in the city, and so putting in new trees that are needed tending... I used to work down at Stanford, and, you know, the buildings and grounds people would come by routinely and take care of trees, like, you know, they had places they would flood for watering, and their new trees would take years and years to establish themselves. So if we need to plan for that. If we're going to put the new trees in, we need... That needs planning. But particularly, the communication was lacking for this, and I personally was not aware of the earlier meetings that had been happening on this, and maybe it's my fault. I've tried to get on mailing lists for the city and for these meetings, and I haven't been able to find it, and so I depended upon the mail showing up, which it does, but this one showed up last week, very early, very short notice, to really figure out what's going on here, so I guess that's... Let's see if I have a couple more. Oh. For the roads, we have a major problem with cars going up the wrong ways, okay? I mean, they're just always going up the wrong ways. They're going up both ways too fast. We need speed bumps. We need arrows on the road saying, "Which way to go?" So those are my simple comments. Thank you.
Thank you. By way of reminder, Planning Commission will not respond directly to individuals, but we may re-ask your questions at the end of public comment. So with that being said, we've got Sharon Ryan, followed by Steve Sutley, and after Steve will be, I believe this says, Russell.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I feel I've been here for 50 years. My family has. My family has. And we came here because of the greenery of Pacifica. And what I see now, it's just heartbreaking. I was walking my dogs over in Balamar, and they took out 10 huge trees on Minerva, all at one time during the time when all the little birds were nesting. And somebody who was in the know happened to be in that neighborhood and told me all about how many birds had probably been killed in the nest because they did it at the wrong time, and it cost a fortune. And he said it used to be that Pacifica had plans to trim the trees here and there. And he said, "A lot of the PG&E people are coming in, and they're cutting the limbs down, and they're not paying attention to the symmetry of the tree because the limb might hit the wire, and they're not trained in that." And every place I go, there's no shade hardly at all. The trees help... Those older trees help with the air quality, of course, all trees do. And it's just so sad because one of my friends came to visit me, and she hadn't been to my house for about 25 years, and she was in shock. She said, "You look like you live in a tenement slum. What happened to all the trees?" "I have nine trees on my piece of property up in Fairmont. Everyone else has cut every palm tree down. My next-door neighbor tried to cut with a chainsaw on my property my Monterey pines, and I called the people, the heritage people, and I couldn't get anyone to even charge him. And I know you always are talking about Pacifica, how you're getting sued or you don't have enough money. Well, if you started finding the people that are cutting the trees down, and it's just awful what you're doing to Pacifica. It's just sickening what you're doing. I can't find any place even to walk with shade. I'll see a tree that's in Valamar, for example, because I love that place. It does have some trees left, of course, and they'll say, 'We're cutting it down.' I say, 'It's a beautiful tree. Why are you cutting it down?' It's in the middle of the road where the little stream is. And they said, 'Oh, this man thinks it's going to fall on his house.'" And all those trees supposedly were cut down on Minerva because it was during the storm of... We had 120 mile-per-hour winds at my house. And people were parked on that street, and one of the limbs fell down. And they said, "That's why all the trees were cut down. The 10 trees were cut down all at one time." And the man who knew about the trees and told me about it, and he said how awful it was that they did it all at once and at that time. And it used to be that you did take care of things, just as was mentioned earlier. And I think you've got to go back to that program and stop cutting all the trees down. That's just my feeling, because it's making Pacifica look ugly. My friend said... She said, "I wouldn't buy a house in this neighborhood now. Every palm tree's gone down. We had a palm tree, and every single tree, all the plants are gone. There's house after house after house that doesn't have one single tree on it." So that's my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Steve Sutley, followed by Russell, and then Aaron Clark.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. I'm trying to reconcile the ISA Basic Tree Assessment Form dated 7/3/23 with... So I'm just seeing today photographs and other more detailed arborist reports. I don't know that they really reconcile themselves. And, you know, based on the conversation that we're getting from staff here, it seems we're premature to even discuss anything about heritage trees. And I don't want to limit my focus to just heritage trees. I've been here since 86. And when I bought my house, it was like driving through a tunnel. It was basically two, sometimes three heritage trees in front of every house. And so there was an immediate battle between what should be saved and what shouldn't. What's clear is that the replanting promises are an utter failure. And they've continued to be so in the past 40 years. And I insisted that the city replant the tree in front of my house, which is now 40-plus years old, and it's often mistaken for a heritage tree. So they thrive here. And not knowing what species are going in, and, you know, it's like I look at what goes on with tree planting, at City Hall, and the baseline that's been created on the Palmetto 88 Project. The city actually removed three or four beautiful trees that were in the easement. I don't see any real progress going on here or any real detail that we can hold on to. And this is really important. The notice of this proposed development discussion doesn't include any word of a heritage tree removal. Not one word. And if... I think it's important that the community has noticed. And these used to be really big issues that were advertised in the Pacifica Tribune. And it's not enough that the city says, you know, "Join the mailing list," or "Are you on social media?" It's not enough. We used to get letters wholesale. So it's not just the people on the street that might be immediately affected. It's a community issue. It's part of the general plan that goes back to the 70s. And the emphasis seems to be, you know, environmental impact. It goes on and on about how important trees are for the valuation of our real estate, our mental health, the well-being of the environment, et cetera, et cetera. And none of this is really being addressed. I'm just going to caution the city to maybe get a second... Second opinion on mitigating what... Basically, the arborists that I've talked to over the years have said that the problem has been a lack of maintenance, and that's why the trees have suffered.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Russell, and if you could state your name for the record, followed by Aaron Clark. And I'm going to say Gary Cooper, I believe. And you can correct me if I'm mispronouncing your name. That is the last speaker card I have, if anyone else wants to speak.
Hi, my name is Russell Jones. My husband and I live on Paloma. And, you know, not to be negative, but this is really a criticism. We attended a meeting back in December where all of this work was sort of identified. Timelines were laid out. We were specifically instructed in that meeting in December to be aware that the work would begin in June and that we would not have access to our street for some of the days in June. We were identified that the tree would be removed in June. It was identified that part of our driveway would be impacted in June. So that was last December. We spent the whole half of the year blocked off June. We had guests that were planning on coming. We told them, "Don't come in June. Change your travel plans. Change your days-off plans." We got all the way up to May. We still weren't under the impression that the work was going to begin in June. We had already called the number that we had been given, and they said, "Yep, work's still planning on happening in June. Maybe push back a little bit." We got all the way up to May, called the number again. They're like, "Oh, yeah. We pushed that back." That's really inconsiderate to your residents. We were told to plan for that month and did so, and nobody bothered to say, "Oh, hey, we changed the plans." We really should be able to expect more. So I think my neighbor and I are both wondering, "When is this work going to begin? Are we going to be given, like, adequate notice?" Because I want that work to happen. I want beautiful sidewalks. I want the tree that needs to be torn out. It's a mess. It's like tearing up the sidewalk. I get that. But we do need to be able to plan for it adequately. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. Aaron Clark, followed by Gary Cooper.
I wasn't expecting to be here, but I got informed by a neighbor later this afternoon, so I don't know much about this project. But having sat here just for a few minutes, I can agree with one thing is that the tree issue is completely inadequately addressed here for a lot of reasons. And one is that the city has no tree maintenance program. So there isn't going to be any maintenance done, and even pretend that that's going to happen is ridiculous. There's very few species that will grow in Sharp Park. The city at one time removed all the cypress trees that lined every street from, you know, the second block up to Francisco were all lined with cypress trees at one time. They removed them about 40 years ago, and the city tried to replant. I think they used New Zealand Christmas trees, flowering yuks, and a few cypress trees. The homeowners pretty much went out and destroyed them all. And that's why there's nothing left, because they blocked the views backing out of the drive or whatever. When trees are small, they're kind of annoying, and homeowners have a tendency to just go out and cut them up. So if there's no way to protect them, I'm sure whatever species they plant will probably be inappropriate. City Hall just planted the most inappropriate trees at City Hall that are unlikely to survive. So clearly, the city has no concept of what they're doing. So the city doesn't know what to plant. They don't know how to plant. 24-inch box trees are a horrible choice. It sounds great on paper, but it takes a long time for trees that size to establish. Usually, a 15-gallon tree will outperform a 24-inch box tree within three or four years. If it gets watered correctly, there's a lot of reasons for that, and you can look it up. I won't get into it. So what's being thrown out here is a bunch of lip service. I hear about high risk. I guarantee that, you know, using ISA standards, none of those trees out there are going to be in that high-risk category. So just a lot of buzzwords being thrown out, a lot of things that sound great on paper. Clearly, none of it's going to work. So if you want trees, you're going to have to rethink that part of the project. That's all I'm saying. The rest of it, I'm sure the street and stuff, I'm sure they got that all worked out. I mean, that's the engineering standards. It's basic standard procedure. But if you actually want trees, you actually have to think about it. And nobody has done that here. I can see that plain and straight. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Gary Cooper, followed by Daniela Lovnino.
Hello. Daniela Lovnino. I also live on one's... San Jose Avenue, so this isn't affecting us, but we know that something should happen soon that will. I also love trees, but I agree that they need maintenance. And you even touched on it. You were like, "How is it going to get watered?" I mean, you know, you know, it needs more to be done there. And then I also wanted to agree with Bob. With all of our one-way streets, I don't understand why there's not better signage, like just even a white painted arrow in the street, I think, would do it. And then I'm just wondering, like, is it going to take a child to get ran over before we paint an arrow in the middle of our streets? Can the public paint an arrow in the middle of streets? Probably not. So I just... I don't know how the bureaucracy works here, but I don't know. That just seems like a somewhat easy fix for safety. But yes, also love trees. I don't know how that's going to work though. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure... And I apologize if we did, and I just missed it, but I thought there was someone named Gary Cooper. Did they... Did you want to speak? Here are my last card.
Good evening, City Council. I'll be short. One of those trees to be removed is in front of my house, and I could see why. It's tearing up the sidewalk. It's diseased. And you said you're going to replace it with two trees. I was wondering, is that going to be in the same place as the one tree? And if that's so, is it going to affect our sewer laterals when you do plant these trees and the roots start to expand into our sewer laterals? Number two, we have no idea when this project's going to start. It was supposed to start in June, but we don't know. Also, there's signage problems because people go on the wrong side of the street, going the wrong way. And there's speeders, too. And there's a little ballet school down the street from us with little girls, you know, and under speeders. And I was wondering if they can put a speed bump on Paloma Avenue. Signage is a problem, of course. They're always going the wrong way. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So that is it for speaker cards in the room. I will now go to people on Zoom and the phone. So a reminder, if you're called in, to press star nine to raise your hand.
We have one raised hand at this time. Cliff Lawrence, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, Cliff.
Hello. Cliff Lawrence here. Pleased to see you all. Thank you again for your service. Tonight, I want to say that the word that is foremost in my mind is hypocrisy. I'm sorry. I really didn't have an issue before this evening hearing before I heard what I heard tonight. But what I heard tonight was that the city violates all the conditions that it requires of its contractors. Would anybody else see that as hypocrisy? We don't allow our contractors to work in areas where birds are breeding, where we might affect that natural cycle. And if your testimony tonight says that city actions have destroyed nesting areas when they were active, then I ask, is this not hypocrisy? Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Are there any other speakers called in or dialed in?
That was our last caller.
Okay. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commissioners for the remainder of questions and deliberation. I'd like to re-ask some of the questions that we've heard. So I'm going to start with the public engagement question. If staff could get a little bit into the noticing, was this published in the newspaper?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hauser. So I'll start with the noticing for this public hearing tonight, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose. So the project is the CDP, so we did put notices on the site. As stated in the staff report, there was a notice of public hearing posted at eight locations along the streets that will be affected. And there was a legal ad that was published in the San Mateo Daily Journal. The city no longer publishes in the Pacifica Tribune because it's only online now. So we publish now in the San Mateo Daily Journal. That notice was published 10 days before this public hearing. There was also a mailer that was sent out to the surrounding property owners and tenants. That's a 500-foot radius that we send out to all for public hearings. And like I said, it went to property owners and tenants within the project site and 500 feet around.
Okay. And then, as far as getting on Pacifica's mailing list, I heard a question about that. Can we just remind people how to add themselves to the mailing list?
Yeah. So if you would like to be notified of all Planning Commission meetings, the best way to do that would be to email planningdivision@pacifica.gov and to request we put onto the Planning Commission Interested Parties list. For other Interested Parties lists, depending on what your interest is, we have a housing Interested Parties list. We have a local coastal Interested Parties list. And I know engineering also has a few Interested Parties lists for their projects, so I'll let them respond to that.
Okay.
Great, thank you. In terms of the Interested Parties list or the notification for this project?
Go for both.
Okay. Well, the first one, let me let Brian answer that. Is there... It's the email address for Public... We have an email address for Public Works that we use to address concerns. Let me look that up, and I can state that for the record.
Thank you.
But it's a public email address that's used to go straight to Public Works operations, and then any concern is responded to there. With respect to this project, so the notifications, I mentioned the public meeting that was done on December 12th of last year that the resident referenced. The noticing for that was, prior to the meeting, a postcard was sent out to all the residents fronting the project. So that happened at that time. In terms of looking forward, there's two notifications that are upcoming. One I already mentioned, which is the sidewalk with residents and the contractor and the arborist. So that's a sidewalk that we will invite all of the residents fronting the project again and anyone else who stated interest in being there to walk the project with the contractor. That'll be before construction commences. Our standard notification for all, in Pacifica, for all construction projects that's in our bid is, two weeks prior to construction commencing, all of our contractors are required to send a door hanger or a letter to each residence that's affected by the work directly. So that's two-week notice before construction starts, and that'll happen on this project.
Chair Hauser, I will also add that this project is an implementation of the city's bike and pedestrian master plan, and there was also community engagement to create that master plan.
Okay. So just to synthesize that, there's been a lot of community engagement, but for people who want to... who want to make sure that they don't miss a notification, they could email planningdivision@pacifica.gov.
That is correct.
Okay. And we'll get the engineering email in a minute. Heritage trees versus non-heritage trees were brought up. Are there non-heritage trees that are being proposed for removal in addition to the heritage trees?
I think they refer to them in the arborist report as protected trees. I don't know that they use the word heritage. I think, I don't know if anyone else here knows, but I think it's protected tree is the word the arborist is using, protected by the Pacifica Tree Ordinance.
Got it.
And he does state that these three trees are protected trees.
Right. Are there non-protected trees that are also being removed?
I don't know if they're, no, those are the only three being removed unless some-
The only three that are removed are protected. So every tree that's being removed is being mitigated for, in other words?
Correct.
Cool.
And I do have an answer to the question about the species, if you'd like, species of tree.
Let's come back to that. I want to make sure that I'm re-asking the majority of the community questions that I heard. And then, where are the new tree locations? That's something that will defer. I think that's a question that we know that there's going to be more discussion about. Was a question about tree maintenance programs, was that answered when Commissioner Redfield or Commissioner Godwin asked his question earlier? I stepped out momentarily.
Are you referring to long-term maintenance, not during construction?
Yes, correct. Is there a long-term tree maintenance program?
It would just fall to the city's existing program. There's nothing that this capital project, which is planting, is a capital expense. There's nothing this project has. We don't have a maintenance contract being let out. So whatever the tree maintenance, the Pacifica already is performing in their Streets Division.
Sure. So I'll maybe re-ask that question to our Public Works Department. Do we have a tree maintenance program for existing trees, long-term maintenance?
It's Field Services Division that manages that. And I can't speak to the details of what they do, but the Field Services Division is the one that's responsible for that.
Okay. And then the only other questions I had were pertaining to timing, which I think until we know the outcome of this meeting, we probably don't know how to predict timing.
I do have some information, yeah.
Sure.
So if, when the, if this were project were approved for permit, then after the appeal period, then the project could be let out for bid. And then, which we did recently on the Espinal Palm Meadow project, for example, we waited until the appeal period ended, then we put the project out to bid, and then we recently opened bids. So the timeline there would be, if it were approved tonight, then the project would be bid out later this month, later in August. And then, we don't want to start construction, certainly during Fog Fest. So if bids are favorable and we end up moving forward with the low bid, which is a question, that's not a certainty, then we could potentially start construction after Fog Fest, which would be September 30th, I think would be our construction start. But that, again, is contingent on the success of the bid process.
So how much notice can residents expect? Is that, I don't want to lock you into something, but just-
Once we have a contractor on board, then they would get the two that I mentioned, the notification of a sitewalk, the opportunity to attend a sitewalk, and then the door hanger notice two weeks before construction.
Okay. And then, I did hear a lot of comments about one-way streets, and that does seem to be a problem we have with people turning the wrong way down streets. Is there a way to add signage or enhance safety with this project?
Not with this project. That's an operations concern, and so I can give you the email. In fact, I have the email address for your earlier question. That would be the same email address you'd want to use for any type of traffic concern, to send an email to that, and then you'll get a response. It wouldn't be implemented through this project.
So let's hear the email address.
Sure. It's engineering@pacifica.gov.
Okay. And I don't think that the planning commissioners are going to email the engineers and tell them about our traffic concerns. So if staff can find a way to maybe relay that back within staff, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. Those were all the questions that I heard. If anyone heard anything else, feel free to jump in or just go ahead with your questions.
Following on the chair's momentum, some of the other questions that I heard from the public and jotted down, what will be the procedure for a nesting bird survey? Or, I don't know if you could speak to plans for just ensuring that you're not cutting down trees that have nesting birds? I don't believe it will be the nesting season, but I'm not an expert on this.
Yeah, the Federal Magituri Bird Treaty Act has requirements to survey for birds, and it does vary by time of year. So if this were to occur now, it'd be highly unlikely. If it's during nesting season, a biologist is required to go out and clear the site. So look in the tree for any nests, and then if there's nest, then there has to be a, the biologist determines where the project has to be delayed, or whether they can move forward with relocation or some type of other, there's a number of things a biologist might recommend, but it's up to a qualified biologist to make that call.
And is this noted in the plan somewhere, perhaps in the notes section? Or is there, can we add a note as a condition just to ensure that the contractor is aware of the requirements they have to abide by for nesting birds?
Yes, we can add that.
Related to trees, I know Chair Hauser mentioned this earlier, requesting a landscape plan. I don't know if perhaps staff found a landscape plan that they could project on the screen. The community had some questions, rightfully so, about where the new trees will be planted, especially if it's in front of their property.
Yeah, some information on that. We don't have a demo or a landscape plan. What we have, though, are locations called out in the plans. It's hard to see them when you're looking at, there's so many callouts for other improvements, but they're in the improvement sheets that are laid out by street that were included in the staff report. But I actually want to, I have some information about location right now, which is that the locations of the existing trees that are coming out, which are at 1709 Palm Meadow, 1710 Francisco, and 137 Paloma, those are those trees that James talked about, but those are just, I'm just stating them as addresses. Those are where those trees are located. Those, when they're removed, will be planting, one, not two, one replacement 24-inch box tree in those existing tree wells. The other locations are where it'll be determined in the field, and we're not certain yet because we have to USA and find out where sewer laterals and utilities are. So there are planting opportunity areas that are identified in the plans. They're called potential planting areas, I think is the term that's used in the plan. Those are the ones that the arborist has gone out and already identified as potential locations for those new trees. But that call will be made once the USA marks are down, and we can see where the utilities are.
Okay. That actually answered one of my questions. I was just wanting to make sure that you were going to USA before you started work. Jumping back to questions about the construction timeline and start date, what's the, I know you don't have bids out yet for a contractor, but what's the expected construction duration? And is it going to be phased, like one street before the other?
It's, there's no phase called out in our specs or our plans or specs, but there is the thought that it'll be a 60 to 70 working day job. But then, that's the entire project, and not just the work on any given street. So the entire project, all three streets, 60 to 70 working days is what we're currently anticipating.
I will have a couple of comments about the notification process, but I want to open it up to other commissioners.
I had two questions, one to follow up on a recent question. It rains a lot more from October to March than it does the rest of the year. If we do this, do this construction during that period after Fog Fest, is that going to impact how long these streets are, or how long this project's going to take, and these streets are going to be difficult to use?
It could be. A lot of times, we don't start work, we're getting towards the end of the construction season for this type of work, which is why if bids aren't favorable or there's any delay with regard to the bid process or the approval process tonight, this project could easily be then moved. And when it gets moved, typically will get moved to bidding it at the beginning of the calendar year and then actually breaking ground in March, April, for the reasons you just stated. So we're trying to get this in late in the year, but if there's any delays, then it could push the schedule out for weather. Because we get in a situation where it rains, where it's raining so much, we're crediting working days to the contractor, but then if they've broken ground, there could be impacts to leaving the work in place, which could have an impact on the residents that we would like to avoid.
Yeah, March, April sounds a lot better to me. My other question that I know a little bit about is sewer laterals. Back in the day, they used to be made out of clay pipes, and they had a quite limited life. With these new trees, and obviously, these houses have been there a long time, what do you think the impact of planting new trees and having them grow robustly is on these aging sewer laterals? And how many years would you project that this either reduces their life, or how many years of life do they have left? When should people budget for sewer lateral replacement, given this project's going in?
Well, in terms of the new trees that are going in, the existing trees will be ground out, they won't just be removed to the ground. They'll be, we'll be doing root grinding, stump grinding, and then all the way down below grade to be able to plant in those wells or at least nearby. So you won't see the, we won't be leaving stumps or even anything flesh. You won't see anything on the surface. But in terms of the, so those have already been in place, so I don't know if the new impact is any different than what's already been there. The new trees, as I said, will be doing a USA and giving some thought to where we put these new trees with respect to where utilities are, including sewer laterals. It's probably all, I don't have a lot of speculation about how long the sewer would last, but if you have a clay lateral in a street with street trees, then it's probably going to replace it in general. But I don't know that this project, we will definitely consider that to make sure that we are not putting them right on top of a lateral and as far away as we can get it.
Is there any new material for laterals that you could recommend or just encourage people to investigate if they've got to replace one that would be more robust?
Yeah, usually they're, nowadays, usually it's HDP is what's going in. It's a form of plastic pipe. That's the standard for most Public Works projects in the main line. And you can use that in the lateral or PVC. It's just a much tighter, you don't have the bell where there's potential for leaks and root intrusion as much. So that's the standard, that's the current standard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if we keep a file on any of the existing trees that we've done the survey on? Also, if we keep a similar file on any of the replacement trees so that we can track our inventories?
I'm being told Field Services has that information. We don't have it with us tonight, but Field Services of Public Works maintains that.
So theoretically, with these replacement trees that get put in, we could go back five years from now and track and make sure that those trees are still in place?
Potentially. I know that, all I know is that Field Services keeps information on that, so it's possible. If that inquiry were made, we might be able to determine that.
And then, in the event that a replacement tree or a protected tree somehow evaporates, and we caught somebody for that, what is the process for ensuring that that tree gets replaced? Because it should enjoy the same protected status as the tree that it replaces. I was just wondering if you could explain to both myself and the public what that policy and procedure is?
I'm not aware of it, you know? Yeah, we're not, we don't have the information tonight.
Okay.
Commissioner Wright? I will just add, the tree preservation ordinance does require that if a replacement tree shall fail to establish, we do require an additional replacement tree. So that would be what we expect from the project as well. If one of the replanted trees fails, we would expect that it be replaced.
And is that a one-to-one replacement, or is that also a two-to-one replacement?
That would be a one-to-one replacement of the required replacement tree.
Over what timeline?
The code does not provide a timeline for that subsection. We would have to work with the city arborist to determine an appropriate timeline, and I would assume that it would depend on the tree species and the original planted size.
I also just want to make a statement. I miss the Tribune because I think it did a lot to help keep our public informed. I miss our local newspaper. Also, when you mentioned purple pipe, that obviously is one of my big passions. It rings a lot of bells for me. Are you putting any Christie boxes in for any purple pipe meters if purple pipe passes in front of these things? Is that a consideration? Are you sleeving for potential purple pipe?
It's not part of this, so on the laterals, you mean? The boxes at the right-of-way line for the lateral?
Yeah.
No, we're not, that's not part of this project.
So, sorry, I want to get back to the question that kind of spurred that. So you have six new trees. How are we going to make sure that they don't, I mean, trees need water, right, to get established? And we're in an area where through the Phase 1 Palm Meadow streetscape project, which is all adjacent to where we are, we installed a whole bunch of purple pipe, and all those bulbouts that you see in Palm Meadow are already irrigated with purple pipe. So the infrastructure is there. So I think the question, and it also conforms to the Sharp Park specific plan goals as well as our general plan goals, so we should be irrigating new trees, and it should be through reclaimed water.
That's a great comment, and I'm going to take that back to our arborist and ask him the question. I think I want to make sure the arborist, the arborist will make the call as to what type, whether it be reclaimed or potable water that is used. And if he agrees that reclaimed water is good for tree health, and whatever's good for tree health, we'll have them do. The project is hand-water, so during construction, the contractor's responsible for doing watering. That's called out in our bid. After that period of time, there's a one-year warranty on the work that the contractor's responsible for keeping, for maintaining the trees. After that, it reverts to town maintenance, city maintenance.
Isn't that a quick clarification question? When you say arborist, is it the project arborist or the city arborist, or are they one and the same?
It's a, no, my understanding is the city has consulting arborist, has several on call. This particular arborist that was selected for this project was tree management expert.
Okay. Commissioner Wright, sorry, thank you for letting me-
Not a problem. I'm happy that questions further continue discussion. I noticed and wrote down that this is also a lot of grant money. I think that this is yet a further tribute to our soon-to-be departing Public Works Director and a lot of grant work and things that have been put in place for a long time. And I'm glad to see Pacifica bringing in this kind of revenue to help support us in doing a lot of good things. I also noticed in the very first picture you put up, this happens a lot in Pacifica. I see it in a lot of places. I see a little pipe sticking out of the sidewalk from where somebody's rain leader pumps water out onto the sidewalk. Are you offering homeowners an opportunity to put a sleeve in the sidewalk before closing it up so that we don't have, like on my street, where there's a bunch of cuts in the sidewalk and then patches where people add that in later?
Yeah, we have, that's a standard curb drain is what it's called. We bring the property line leader, or usually it's a small PVC pipe or whatever it is. We connect that through the concrete, and then we pour in place. And then you see it in the curb face as an opening. So we will be doing that where needed as we go along and put the sidewalk in.
Okay. I also would like to know, did you consider having your arborist here for this discussion tonight? And if not, why not?
I didn't, I didn't personally consider it. I don't know if anyone else did. We just attached the arborist report to the staff report.
I would consider for future meetings, since so many of the questions are tree-centered for a project like this, that you might want to consider having your arborist here to field some- some questions about his report. Was undergrounding of the power infrastructure considered or was PG&E contacted or consulted prior to the commencement of this project?
I see, so I was asking the question because this project, as I mentioned, has a million dollars in federal funding, so we're required to, as part of that, receiving that funding, to contact the utility owners, which are all the utilities, electric, gas, everything, sewer, water. So they've all been notified of the project. I don't know, and we've coordinated with them, I don't know though if, any thought to undergrounding, that's a very expensive, that would have been a separate endeavor. I don't believe that was considered here for this project.
I've just seen so many times that we put in a bunch of infrastructure and then two months later you dig it up to do something else. Just wanted to make sure we were trying to coordinate to the best of our ability.
Sure. I'm not aware of any undergrounding project there.
Okay, and.
Yeah, not aware of an undergrounding project in that area.
And typically as a policy and procedure, how, what is the minimum distance that you want to do? Any plantings from any given utility or sewer lateral in particular?
I've seen different clearances, I don't want to say, on this project, the arborist is going to make that determination.
Citywide, what is our policy and procedure?
I don't have that with me.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Redfield.
Thank you, Chair. You had mentioned earlier a 60 to 70, I believe you augmented that to 73-day timeline for construction. Is that, that over 60-day, is that a contingency time or is this based on general engineering for this particular type of project?
You mean the working days that I referred to?
The timeline for that, yes, from start, completion day, you know, from start to completion.
Would just be, usually that's just the, the way Pacifica's specs read, that's we issued notice to proceed and then, and then that starts the clock, and then we count days from that point forward. And that usually, and the contractors are aware of that, so there's preliminary submittals that go in prior to that, so that usually right when notice to proceed is issued, actual construction starts, doesn't have to, they just have to complete within the window. But typically, they're breaking ground and actually doing work in the field soon after that notice to proceed is issued, because that starts the clock.
And that, and that timeline is obviously based, is there a weather factor in there? Again, we're talking about early spring, possibly, obviously love to start it tomorrow, but that's not, not going to happen.
It's embedded in the sense that any, every day a call is made on whether that should be an assessed working day, and weather days are credited all the time. So if we determined that it was impacting the work the contractor could do, then the town makes a call as to whether, sorry, I keep saying town, city, keeps making a call as to whether to credit a working day, whether to charge that as a working day or not.
And this is negotiable with the city and whoever the bidders are, assuming?
It can't be negotiated, it's pretty, it's typically the city makes the call.
And that's there.
Contractor can agree or not.
To work into that, thank you. Other, another question, it was discussed on stump grinding, that was for the trees that will be removed. That is, do we have any indication on how far below grade? Some of these trees are quite, quite large, quite established.
The standard is six inches below ground surface, but we may need to go deeper here because these are, typically when you're doing that, you're not replanting in the same location.
Correct.
So we'd need to go significantly further. Or we could, if there's room to plant nearby and not have to go in exactly where the tree was, so I think that's a call we'll make in the field with the arborist.
And as, obviously as.
But the intent is to, the intent, and the arborist has already stated this, is to put replacement trees in all three of those locations where trees are coming out.
If practical. Another one you touched, I'm curious if there's been a wastewater lateral inspection in West Sharp Park? That's probably not a question that you may know, that's going to be a wastewater issue, but again, that's one of the oldest, the oldest established neighborhood. It's highly possible that many of those laterals have been replaced, just given the age, but the materials used, obviously, I think those were all either, you know, ACP or very old pipe. And I'm very curious with going forward with this project, if wastewater inspection and analysis has been done, since there's a lot of disruption that will happen just, just during construction that could possibly affect that. Also, any of the tree removal could, you know, could affect it, and also again, where those laterals are actually located, and you had touched on that, I believe, also, with the planting of the new trees coming in, locations for those, for USAing those locations, but I'm, I'm very concerned about if those laterals, as we know all over town, there are many compromised laterals. And given the age of that neighborhood, that's a serious concern that I think should be, we should have that information. When that analysis, if that analysis has been done, if they've been camered and where that, many of those on those, particularly those streets would be. I have one more question, there were several questions by the public on one-way direction. So the slurry seal, if I'm understanding this correctly, is in this bid, but we don't have exact, you know, line, curb lines, obviously there'd be no center lines, it's a one-way road. There'll be plenty of delineations, I'm sure, for the curb cutouts for ADA, those are generally extremely well-marked crosswalk and all that. So is that, any thermal markings on the streets in this, in this project for directional arrows?
We have the, we do have thermoplastic striping going in for the crosswalks at the streets I mentioned, and then we also have the bike stencils will be thermoplastic, the Bike Boulevard stencils. As you said, we don't have center lines, so it's mostly the, the crosswalks and the stencils.
But no, in particular, no, in the scope of the, of the paving project or the slurry project, particularly directional arrows is not in this scope?
Oh.
It seems to be a serious concern with the, obviously, the neighborhood.
Yeah, right now, we're, our plan's called to replace anything that is down now, so whether, if it's deteriorated, if it was already there, regardless of the condition, obviously we'll be taking it out as we're repaving over. All that will be put back, and then with the addition of the bike stencils. So, so in addition to those, which we've already mentioned, anything that was already there that we're covering over will obviously be replaced. We don't have in our plan to put any new stencils or arrows or any other traffic-related striping down as part of the design. And I think I talked earlier about, there's a process for making a traffic, having traffic input on whether it's traffic calming or any traffic-related concern a resident has that would contact Public Works, and then that will be responded to. But that's not in this project.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Godwin has another question?
Yeah, I, one last question. The state plans on stopping natural gas piping to houses within about 15 years, which should be within the life of these improvements, is that process going to affect these things or invalidate them? I mean, validate this project in some way or cause additional expense in the future whenever, I mean, who knows if they're actually going to do it on schedule? But if they do, is that going to have a big impact? Are we going to have to redo a lot of this work in the foreseeable future?
Absolutely. I don't know where it would be, wherever that would occur, where you'd have to, do I'm actually removing them or just cutting them off?
I don't know whether they're going to cap them or remove them, or, you know, I mean, this is just kind of a vague government-level thing that no more natural gas after, at some point in the future, and I think that number was about 20, 40 to houses.
It's highly variable. It would depend on where the service, if there are valves, and how they would, how they would cut off the service to each residence or in the mainline.
Yeah.
Would vary depending on the infrastructure that's in place. Sometimes there are valves that are in vaults that can be controlled, and other times there isn't, so they'd have to dig. But that's just highly variable, and we haven't really, we're proceeding on this and I believe other projects where we're paving and doing the infrastructure as if, you know, when that happens, it'll just have to be dealt with at that time, because it's unknown as to whether or not that'll happen.
Okay.
Vice Chair, do you have any questions?
Most of them have asked. I guess I'll ask this more pointedly. I also live in West Sharp Park, on my way home today, I saw a man being ticketed for driving the wrong way on our one-way street, first time I've ever seen it. There is no indicator on the end of my street at all to indicate it's a one-way street. If your GPS decides to take you the wrong way, or people just say, I'm going to this street and turn right, there's absolutely nothing that indicates it's a one-way street if you're entering from the wrong side, and that's true of many streets in this neighborhood. My question would be, and it's very specific, if we create a condition of approval, because I think this is very much within our purview, to require thermoplastic directional indicators, do you feel that you would have time to amend the plans such that that would be a part of the bid documents by bid time between now during the appeals period?
We do have time to make a plan revision, yes.
Great, thank you.
Maybe if you had, if you had a, if you'd like to make a specific comment, we can take that under consideration to add striping down. I just, if you could either do that now or just make it as a general comment.
I think during deliberation, we'll get some better language for you.
I think it's a good idea, and I would be more than amenable to support a condition like that. I mean, I, I looked at these plans, I'm on a computer, I didn't print them at full size, but I've like made them searchable and even through searching them, it's really hard to find six locations for potential trees. And some of them, like there's a note on C3 where there's a tree that indicates removal but also indicates preserve, and also, you know what I mean? There's things that conflict, and I'm really not used to seeing plans like this without a landscape plan. So I think this is, let me just say, it's so cool that we're finally improving things, like we need improvements, we need public improvements. We said this at the last meeting where we reviewed the public improvements, the new crosswalks and, you know, corresponding to our bike and pad master plan, which is so important. But I do think it's also important to put the thought into it, because I think a lot of these things, if we don't identify them in the plan phase, will go by the wayside. And what I mean by that is, a planting plan, real details on what tree protections are required and not just a note that says tree protection by arborist, you know what I mean? Because the arborist report also doesn't say what the tree protection is. So I think maybe there's one more interstitial step, but I fully think this is an amazing project. I just think we need more information before I am ready to understand it.
Can I go back for a second?
Please.
All right. I have quite a few questions. I'm going to try to stick with general before flipping through the plans. First off, I, I understand and appreciate that the project is funded by grants, and I know that kind of narrows the amount of work that we could pile on to this project. I'm assuming most of the grants are transportation-related, so I had that in my mind when I was kind of going through this staff report. But I guess to jump off of the Chair's most recent comment, and also acknowledging that the plans included in the staff report are stamped as final plans issued for bidding, I think it's typically hard to bid realistic costs without a landscape plan when there's quite a bit of landscape removal or improvements with this project. So I think that's something that is absolutely needed and the community needed to see it in the staff report. The notification process during construction, I think it's absolutely vital that the community receives regular updates and notifications on when the work will be parking their property, especially because this is going to close people's driveways. And parking in this neighborhood is so challenging sometimes. And then on top of that, I'm sure with driveway closure, the nearby street parking will also be unavailable as well. So I don't know if there's a precedent for this in the city, but perhaps there's some texting notification process, like I subscribe to San Mateo County's alerts, and I get text messages, sometimes like once a day of highway one's closed at this location. I love it because I get to plan my day, I get notifications, oh, next week, the tunnel's going to be closed. I think this neighborhood needs something like that. Vice Chair Ferguson mentioned condition of approval 6C. I wanted to circle back on that, just to make sure that the Olympian Way was supposed to be replaced with, I'm guessing, all three streets that are impacted with this work?
That is correct.
Okay. And then also that same COA, I think it'd be important to add parking to that. It, let me pull it up.
Can you tell us what packet page?
Yeah. Packet page 144, and COA 6 is about traffic control plans, and then item C is lane closure. So lane closure shall only be permitted with prior approval from the Department of Public Works. I think parking also needs to be added to that, because you could, you could close a lane but not parking and vice versa. I think, I think they need to go hand in hand. Conditions of approval, I think typically when we have public improvements, we usually have many more conditions of approval related to sidewalk replacement and replacing adjacent asphalts if damaged during construction. I'm, I'm wondering if staff thinks that those typical COAs that we usually include should be added to this one as well?
Commissioner Berman, we can. The, the project description, the project proposes to replace essentially all the asphalt and sidewalks in this area, so that's one of the reasons we did not put that specific condition of approval. Anything that would be, could be damaged is going to be replaced.
So if, let's say, so there's almost no work on Beach Boulevard, let's say Beach Boulevard, which part of it is in terrible condition. If, if the potholes there are just worse than they are today because of the construction that's just ongoing and the traffic, would we require some like pre-construction survey of, let's say, Beach Boulevard that the contractor needs to document, okay, the pre-constructed condition of this side street, and then at the end of construction, they have a survey that indicates either they didn't further destroy the street or that they'll replace it? I don't know if you're following me?
Yes, I believe we've added some similar conditions of approval to other projects, specifically projects in the San Pedro neighborhood, so we could explore adding something like that to this condition of approval.
I'd be interested in that, and mainly it's because Beach Boulevard is terrible in some locations, and if part of this project is to repair the street, if it's possible to just at least not further exacerbate the issues on Beach Boulevard, I'd appreciate The, let's see. The, and now we're probably going to get into the plans. The location of the pavement marking for the Bike Boulevard, I don't disagree to put it in the middle of the road, but I typically, you would, you would locate the shero marking in a location where you want bikers to go, so sometimes that is offset to the side of the road, so cars perhaps have room if they're to pass by the cyclists. Is there a reason why we're locating it in the center of the road? Again, I don't oppose it, I just kind of wanted to understand the logic.
Yeah, I know. So the MUTCD, which is a manual we follow for traffic, those types of concerns.
Yep.
For sharos, as you said, it's offset typically. There's guidance exactly where it should be, and it depends on how, there are things it depends on, mostly involving the shoulder and the dimensions of that. But I think for Bike Boulevards, I think, and especially this is a one-way street, I think that's the standard, is to put it in the center.
Okay.
I'm not completely sure, but I think that is the standard, as opposed to the sharos where it's offset.
Is the i-
But that's a good comment. I will look into that.
Yeah, and I mainly ask, because is the idea that we don't want cars to pass cyclists on Paloma? Or do we expect that cars will pass cyclists? In which case, it would be safer for everyone if the cyclists were offset further to the right? Before I get into the plans, and if anyone has, wants to chime in, feel free. There was a mention about speed bumps in one of the public comments. I know we've talked about speed bumps in Sharp Park before. This was several years ago. I understood that the fire department does not want speed bumps on the road. Is that still the case? Or is it that Public Works has issues with the maintenance required for speed bumps?
Commissioner Berman, I can respond to that. So my recollection is, with speaking with the city engineer ruling up, is that the city doesn't have a speed bump policy. In order for the city to start implementing speed bumps, we really need a policy in place in order to guide where those would be, and under what circumstances. Essentially, the, the fear is that once the city installs a speed bump in one street, everybody is gonna want it. And we need to have a way to essentially determine what streets qualify for it, how the city's gonna pay for it, and maintain it.
Okay. I do recall, actually, now that you say that, I do recall that being told to me probably five years ago. Okay. I want to second the request for pavement marking of the one-way street identification. So I think arrows probably sound simple enough, but we could even look as deep as "do not enter" on the pavement. But I want to show my support for adding pavement markings for demarcating the one-way streets. Root barriers. There are several cities in the peninsula that require root barriers at the back of walk when you install their public sidewalk. I think at a minimum, it would be important to require root barriers adjacent to where we're planting the new trees. One city example that I have is the city of Sunnyvale. Their standard details for public sidewalk installation and curb ramps and driveways say that root barriers may be required. So I think it'd be important to install root barriers adjacent to the new trees, if not wherever possible at the back of sidewalks. This is kind of a small one, but wanted to make sure it doesn't get missed. So since we're resurfacing the street, I know the plans do identify where the fire hydrant blue markers are. I noticed that, and it's, it's pretty regular that there's one fire hydrant within each block of street, but there was one missing between, there was one missing on Carmel between Francisco and Palmetto, just before that, that street gets resurfaced. If we could just make sure the contractor knows to put the, the reflective marker. I mean, obviously, it's gonna be right next to the fire hydrant, but just in case. We want the firefighters to know where the hydrants are.
What street was that on, between Francisco?
That was Carmel. Packet, page 154. It's Plan C4. So we're looking at Paloma and the intersection of Paloma and Beach Boulevard. I'm wondering why we are not proposing a curb ramp on the opposite side of Beach Boulevard? So the farthest west location where, so there's an existing curb ramp. But there isn't another one on the opposite side of Beach Boulevard? Can we propose a curb ramp there, along with a crosswalk? And then actually ironically, I think the existing curb ramp there directs pedestrians north, which I don't think is where many people walk. Think the intent is to walk probably towards Beach Boulevard. But if the intent is to direct people north, then there needs to be another curb ramp on that side of the street, as well as a crosswalk.
We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you for the comment.
Commissioner Wright has his light on, and then Vice Chair.
Just another quick follow-up on the speed bump issue and kind of the tree issue mixed together. What was the arborist's charge? What was he told to evaluate when he was evaluating the removal of those trees? Was he given an option to have the sidewalk kind of go out in the street and avoid those trees and leave them in place as a possible traffic calming measure to make people slow down? Or was he told that the trees are in the way? You gotta evaluate whether we can cut it down? I just want to understand what his, his mandate was.
Yeah, there were, well, we didn't want to remove parking. That was part of it. I think it was two things, two things I heard from him when we discussed this with the arborist. One is that he felt the condition of those trees was very poor. And he says in his report, he's familiar with Pacifica, and says in his report, he'd been monitoring these trees for many years. And I know in talking to him, he felt that these trees were in very poor health. So one of the things that, you know, I, we asked him was, could you increase the, like, build a bulb out, increase the planting area for the tree, which would have removed parking? And that wasn't something that he felt was worthwhile, because he felt the trees should be removed for their, due to their health, proximity to power lines, and as part of tree health. So how would, how would it have been pruned for utility lines? And other factors, how old the tree was, a lot of different factors. I'm not an arborist, but I, that's what I recall him saying about it.
And were any other traffic calming considerations given in this project? Since we've heard from the public, obviously, you didn't hear from the public before you drew the plans, but were any traffic calming measures considered?
It wasn't, it wasn't part of the project's scope. From the very beginning, it was envisioned as a pedestrian bicycle project to address ADA and to be compliant with the bike pad master plan. It wasn't, traffic calming was not part of the project's scope that we went out and got grants for. That's why it wasn't included in the project.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, and then Commissioner Redfield.
I got a couple of specific questions, and I'll, I'll tell you why I'm asking them first. I do public works contracting for a living. I don't do curb and gutter work, but I'm pretty familiar with this arena. We're working on a transportation project for Sonoma County right now, where a geotactical report was produced, but it was done during the summer. It was missed. The soil condition was extremely different in the winter versus the summer. A, not rainy weather, but rainy season work resulted in completely unusable subgrade, which ballooned costs, and ended up resulting in a six-month delay to the project, further ballooning costs. What I, what I would like to know is, first of all, was there a geotactical report done? Because there wasn't one in the packet that I saw.
No, there wasn't. I don't believe so. No.
Are there, so I heard talk of the working days. Are there LDs assessed in this project for going over?
Yeah.
What's that dollar amount?
We'll have to, we'll have to look it up. It's in our, it's in the city Pacifica standard front-end specifications. We'll have to take a look at it.
Got it.
The daily amount.
So if LDs are in the project, but you don't have a geotactical report, there's no way at bid time to have, make assumptions, and if they have subgrade problems, that sophisticated contractors is going to make this very costly for the city. I know, because I would, right? It'll cost them money, and they'll make it cost you more money. You might be able to fix this with some seasonality language, like rainy season language, that, you know, work done during the rainy season is done with the agreement of city engineers and at the risk of the contractor. That's often done for this kind of thing, if we're going to procure services during the rainy season. Just an idea, food for thought. I know we have a strapped budget, budget as it is, right? It's grant funding, but if we have cost overruns due to insufficient project documents at bid time, that's gonna end up falling on the city.
Commissioner Redfield.
Just one quick question, and a few of the photos, and just going through the neighborhood. There are some oversized vehicles, and I'm certain there are several that are, are lived in. Would it be possible, just to make it, take a phone call basically, to, to the resource center to maybe reach out prior to, possibly when that two-week notification point comes up or whatever, before the project? Because parking will tighten up in the entire area. And just to make sure that they, possibly, that could be another win to get somebody out of a vehicle. So I'm sure there, they exist there. But it would take a phone call. It's not a condition. It's just, just a thought.
All right, I will continue. Packet, page 156. The curb ramps at the intersection of Francisco and Paloma. I'm wondering why this type of curb ramp was chosen? And I'm curious if a type Caltrans CM would be more appropriate? Mainly because, so this intersection, cars actually go pretty, well, there's a stop sign, but cars approach the stop sign pretty fast. They like creep around the corner pretty aggressively, and it's a heavily-used intersection. I'm just concerned with this type of curb ramp, and I know Vice Chair Ferguson brought it up in the past, too. People in wheelchairs or pushing strollers have to like go into the middle of the street in order to get to whichever crosswalk they want to cross in. So I'm wondering if we could either fit two curb ramps at each of these curb returns to better direct people to which crosswalk they want to get to, or if a different-style curb ramp might be more appropriate?
We'll take a look at that.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like right now you have a case A, I think. It's, it's a little hard to tell. So I don't know if like a CM, similar to one of the other intersections that you're building or designed. But we could circle back to that. Then Packet, page 157, so the next page. The intersection of Beach Boulevard and Santa Maria. There are two new curb ramps on Beach Boulevard across the street from the improvements. I'm wondering if we could add crosswalks to those curb ramps? It looks like that intersection is mainly concrete, so I appreciate that there is a little bit of visual pavement separation, just concrete versus asphalt. But I think a crosswalk pavement marking at those two crossings would be beneficial. Those were all of my comments. I know that I had a lot there. I don't know if you want to circle back to some of the intersection comments that I had. I'm happy to restate them.
I think I understood the comments, and then we just need to take a look at it.
Take a look.
I think your comments with regard, just so I make sure I understand it, is that the curb ramps are angled out diagonally into the intersection?
At Francisco and Paloma.
They're not directional. At Francisco and Paloma.
Yeah.
Right.
Francisco and Paloma.
At Beach and Santa Maria, there are existing curb ramps that are on the other side of the project, across Beach. That would be your-
Just to add the crosswalks.
Okay.
To add the crosswalks.
Yeah.
The curb ramps are already there at Santa Maria.
Got it.
And, and then lastly, at Paloma and Beach, if it's possible to add a curb ramp on Beach Boulevard, across from, um, across from Paloma.
Across from the project side, so on the ocean side?
Yeah.
That's what I understood as well.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Berman?
Let's see.
Okay. So just in the interest of kind of coalescing what I'm hearing, I've got a list of a bunch of things that we kind of would like answers on, or would like to see on the plans. I personally am gonna reiterate that I would like to see these things before we approve this. Again, I'm super excited about this project. I think we're just like one plan iteration away from moving to the next phase. So unless anybody has other things to say, I'd like to go through the comments that I heard from everybody, and, and I'll get to Commissioner Wright in one second. I'd like to go through the comments that I've heard from everybody, make sure I didn't miss anything, and then get concurrence. Okay, Commissioner Wright?
I understand we can't put speed bumps, but in addition to the one-way markers, something that I've seen as effective in streets for traffic calming and speed-reducing measure is striping that looks like a speed bump. Is that something we want to consider as a condition? And what, I'm in favor of a condition for either marking with arrows, or "do not enter," or both. What do we think is appropriate here?
For the one-way pavement marking, I think it would be important to allow the public works team some time to review. And so I would typically say that we would say, subject to the public works director's approval, or even if we don't even want to be that lenient, something like, the type can, the final design can be determined by city engineer.
Let me ask a question, because I think that the plans need a little bit more detail, personally. And I think we should propose continuing to a date certain, so that we don't slow anybody down. Do, if that's the case, I think what we can do is ask for an answer to the question, and have an answer when we next look at this.
Do we have, is timeline a concern? Because I know, well, I guess they're not gonna start construction prior to Fog Fest. We know that.
Right. I mean, even if, like, look, if we continue to the next hearing and even get like a landscape, I mean-
A landscape plan, yeah.
Just like, some of the typical, like, you know, again, there are trees that are being preserved and demolished on the plans. There's like, you know, the missing blue marker. There are things that are important that, you know, like, I know we'll do a good job, but they should still be on the plans. So- So.
And then we could consider asking about.
I'd like to consider asking about this question and getting an answer right now. And then if we don't know the answer right now, having that information at the next meeting.
And can we add the fake speed bump question in, too?
Yeah, so that's, that's the, so I, just to synthesize that question, because I know it kind of ping-ponged around a little bit. You know, we're talking about adding some striping for speed, just to deal with speed, knowing that we don't have a speed bump policy. But is there something that we could do from a striping standpoint?
Is that a question?
That is a question.
There are measures that, I mean, there's, there's, yes, there are, there is striping you can put down for, for a speed, traffic calming.
Okay.
There are several measures in traffic calming cool toolkit that can be implemented. I think the biggest challenge is that I have to go back and see if, and this applies to some of these comments tonight, to whether they fit into the grant funding that we have and whether or not they can actually be included in the project, added to the project.
Sure.
So that, that applies, that comment I just made applies to that comment and some of the other comments we heard tonight.
Yeah. And so I think, I'm just going to go back and read the list that I have. And then if anybody, if I missed anybody's comments or misunderstood them, please let me know. So the traffic calming striping we just talked about, I have creating just a plan for community engagement. I have looking at the new curb ramp on Paloma by Francisco on sheet C6. I have adding a condition of approval about replacing areas where construction creates damage. I have amending the six C condition to remove Olympian Way and replace it with the three street names that are affected and add the qualification that this is for parking areas as well. Hang on one second. I have the addition of a curb ramp on Paloma and Beach Boulevard and a crosswalk, potentially?
Potentially, for further review.
Yeah. Add a note in the conditions to help with one-way streets. I think that was Vice Chair Yur's note, and I think it should, you had some delineators or something.
Thermoplastic directional indication.
Thermoplastic.
The exact content can be determined by you guys.
And I like those because they're so cost-effective. I'm like, okay. Thermoplastic directional.
Indicators.
Indicators, thank you. It's Monday, people, okay. Fire hydrant, blue marker missing between Francisco and Palmetto on Carmel. Looking into root barriers, which I think is a really good idea, considering the reason we're removing these trees is because they're all messed up from roots. Definitely adding a landscape plan with locations for replacement trees and the landscape species for the type of replacement tree proposed. And I would be amenable to a note that says if there's a conflict with utilities, a new location will be found. But I think that's better than not having a location, right? I'd like to see the tree protection details, locations of tree protection and any other notes, more than just a reference to the Arborist report, because I think contractors get confused when that happens.
Irrigation plan in the landscape plan with the.
Oh, that's right, irrigation, and that was my comment. Yeah, I think we need to understand the irrigation plan. And if the irrigation plan is something very specific, that means that there's no actual plan, just understanding why and how that's going to work and who's going to be financially on the hook for that. And then a demolition plan. I think those, that's everything that I think I've heard. If I missed something, please jump in. Can you speak, can you speak into the microphone?
Waste water inspection on the, on the ladders existing, so we're not tearing the streets back up in, in short term and just to make sure, and just given that, as I stated.
Yes. Thank you.
Chair, did you get the curb ramps on Francisco and Paloma?
I did.
I'd be interested in them keeping a file on the location of the trees that were surveyed and the replacement trees, so that future interested parties can research whether they survived, whether they were cared for.
Yeah, I think, I think that and the request to Public Works about maintenance, like ongoing maintenance and understanding it, I think those are good notes for staff. So this is something Commissioner Wright has brought up at several meetings. And it's the question of if a tree is replaced, it's too small to be protected, so what protects it if no one is keeping a diligent file or tagging it or whatever that may be? So, yeah, okay.
And then I also am interested in, like, if they're sleeving through the sidewalk for purple pipe to, so in the event that a homeowner does want to hook up to recycled water for landscaping or toilets or what have you, that they don't have to cut a hole in their sidewalk to do it, I want to try to be as supportive of homeowners using repurposed water.
Okay. So I think, go ahead.
If I may just add one thing onto that, is that North Coast County Waters purview on the purple pipe, I believe, isn't it? Or is it?
Yeah, let's all speak into the microphone so everyone can hear us. So.
I'm not sure, but I think that's all got to come from City Department of Public Works.
Correct. So North Coast County Water supplies the reclaimed water, they do. But the construction of it would be the purview of the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, yes.
The location of the bike Boulevard pavement markers, if that should be at the center of the street or shifted to the right?
Got it, I thought that that was answered.
I don't, was that, and like I said, I, I don't have an opinion. It's more of if the city wants to ensure bikers are farther to the right so cars could pass, or does the city not want cars to pass bikers?
Yeah, I understood the comment, we'll look into that.
Look into it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think unless staff has questions, I think what I would like to propose is if it's amenable to staff to continue to a date certain that you guys feel would be appropriate.
Can I, can I ask one question? Can we first make sure that we're not under any kind of a time crunch? We're not going to lose our funding.
This is the conversation.
Is that a question? Yeah, there are grant funding deadlines and we will be, so what I'm hearing tonight is we'll continue this and that will likely push the project out. This will probably be built next spring. We'll bid it in, by January, February, because the design is well within the timeframe to do that. But we'll push the construction out because we were already very tight. If this had been proved tonight, we might have been able to bid it and bid it, build it this year, but given we're continuing it, likely we would bid it in January for a March, April start. That doesn't run afoul of the grant deadlines. The grant deadlines are later in the summer. We'll, we'll be up, we will be pushing up against them, but we can ask for an extension. I don't think that's too much of a concern.
Does that do anything to the nesting bird thing with it being springtime?
Oh, that was also the nesting bird notes in the plans.
Yeah, that's a good one. So let's, let me re-ask what Commissioner Wright, just ask in a different way. Could we separate the demolition of the three trees from the remainder of the project so that we are not removing trees during nesting season?
Way we usually do it is put a note in, in the plans, in the specs that the survey will be done and that, you know, there's a whole process that the biologist goes through, so we'll have that in the spec. And because we'll be in the nesting season, but it's not, it's not uncommon, this will be in the construction season. So, and we, I, I have to talk to Public Works as to whether they want to do this early in the season or push it out to later in the season.
Is it?
But we will make sure that that's covered in our specs.
Is it possible to demolish the trees before the winter?
Has to do with the grant. We want the grant to pay for it. So I need to think about that.
Okay.
Commissioner Berman, I would also add that planning staff would need to analyze it, but it's very likely that just the removal of a tree may still require a coastal development permit.
Well, I think, I think the intention, Mr. Vontis, is that we would be approving the plans altogether and that the project timing may be pushed to next year to avoid the rainy season. But that, I think what we're saying is we would separate the three-tree removal, even though it would still be part of this plan set, the three-tree removals would happen after the coastal development permit is issued, but separate from the remainder of the work.
Thank you.
Okay. Was that, was that what you were saying, Commissioner Berman?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the, I think that was your original question. Yeah, okay.
I understand the comment and I'll take that to Public Works and ask and look at the grant requirements to be able to answer that. But I understood that it would be the permit be issued for the entire project, but that the, that the removal of the trees would be contracted for separately prior to the rest of the project being constructed. Is that the comment?
Not necessarily, well, I guess I don't know about the contracting of it, but it's all approved under one encroachment permit. It's just demolition happens to start before the rainy season. And then the construction, the, you know, the sidewalk demolition starts in the spring.
I need, yeah, let me think about that. There are a lot of constraints about that, including the extending the working days. Basically, we'd put a pause on the project.
Yeah.
Have the contractor off the clock, but then the contract would still be running. So I'd have to, and, and then there's the, there's also the grant requirements, so I need to think about that, see if that's possible. If it's not possible, then we would just have the trees assessed by a biologist in the spring, prior to removing them. And they would need to be cleared by a biologist.
In which case, the, the note that Commissioner Berman is referencing should be on the plans.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Did, did we have the piece that he mentioned about the burden of winter time construction?
Yeah, I think we've addressed that, but.
But was it, was it in our notes for there?
I don't think it will matter if we don't issue NTP before the spring. They understand what they need to do.
Yeah. And I'm not here to say, I, I don't have the authority to say this project is going to be moved out. I need to talk to Public Works Management, but it's likely that the, if we don't move forward with an approval tonight, that we would, we would likely move the bid out to early next year and then the construction into the spring. That's likely, but not, not certain, but it's likely.
But we're not going to lose the grant as a result of doing that?
No, I, I don't think that's, no. We could, we can formally request an extension and I think we're, I, I am not concerned about that, but we'll make sure that we file a timely extension request.
Okay. So in the spirit of getting this done, when, how should we schedule returning this to the commission?
Chair Hauser, staff has spoken and we think on October Planning Commission date is doable to revise the plans and come back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Vontis. So would that be October 7th?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to continue to October 7th?
I move we continue this public hearing to the meeting of October 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Excuse me, my chair bumped my voting button. So if you could reset them before we vote, I would appreciate it.
All right, they have been reset.
All right.
Okay, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask one more quick question? Are we going to re-notify all the people about within 500 feet for the October 7th meeting since we seem to have some public concern about notifications?
Because we did continue it to a date certain, we're not required to, but we certainly can at the direction of the Planning Commission.
How do we feel about that?
Re-notify. I think that would be proven.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
October 7th, if anyone wants to mark their calendars.
Okay. So I think that's it for new public hearings. So I think that brings us to commission communications. Does anyone have a communication?
I just wanted to extend my thanks to Public Works Director Peterson for her service and good luck to her in her next endeavors.
If I may second that, kind of, that's, that's my business and Lisa, I have, and I have known each other obviously since she came here and I wish her quite well. And I jokingly said her, her next place of living, well, at least I'll have a place to stay when, next time I go visit there. So I wish her, we've had some great successes in that Public Works Department and yeah, happy trails.
All right. And then staff communications is next.
Thank you. Just a few announcements. So I think at our last meeting on July 1st, I reported out that we were going to be moving to our new civic center location. So the Community Development Department has moved. We are operating out of the new building on, at 1800 Francisco. Just for the Planning Commission and the public, our, our business counter hours have changed slightly. We start at 8:30 now versus 8:00 AM in the morning. We're still closed for lunch, 12:30 to 1:00. And the new building, Engineering Department will be moving soon, this week and next week. So the counter will be full service with Community Development and Engineering staff there in order to help the public. And I'm going to pass it over to Director Kavita for the rest of staff communications.
Thank you. I do want to report that we have a new website called Community Development Department and has a landing page with planning, building and code enforcement. It's still being built, so if you see any errors, please let us know because we are having some issues, we know of. And so our staff has been, has taken up some process improvements that we can do, picking up on some low-hanging fruit. We are trying to standardize all our forms and checklists and adding some new ones. And also we have a digitized zoning map, which we are beta testing within our department. So it's not out for the public, but we have the beginnings of a digitized zoning map. So that's all I have, thank you.
That is so exciting, because that black and white map with the little dots that says like seven, 12, it's really difficult to read, so it's super exciting. And it's also very exciting to see staff in a safe building. So I'm very glad that that project has come to fruition. With that, I think that fulfills our agenda. So do you just want to hang out?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I want to hang up, but not that bad.
You want to hang up?
Maybe if someone brings like some wine.
Don't, don't put, no, don't.